...order and welcome everyone here this evening. Now, we have quite a number of items on the agenda, but we'll move through them as expeditiously as possible. And the first item on our little agenda is a public hearing. So there is a mandated public hearing chairperson statement, which I have to read. So those of you that have heard it before will be in horrible tears, but it is a necessary part of the process, so I will do so. And then we'll have an opportunity to hear from staff and the proponents and so on and so forth, so we'll kick it off with that. And how many people are standing? Mr. Gail, is there a seat there for you?
Oh, I'm fine, your worship.
Well, you're Mr. Fitness anyways. You probably stand there.
Yeah, there you go.
So you wouldn't...
I'll be security.
Security is official council master. The volunteer physician. Okay, the chairperson's statement is as follows. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to the Community Charter and Local Government Act. In accordance with the charter, the time and place of the public hearing was advertised in two editions of the Hope Standard newspaper. In accordance with the District of Hope Application Procedure and Public Hearing Information Meaning Procedure by law number 1393 and the Hope Government Act, the required specifications have been complied with. At this public hearing, any persons who believe that their interest in the subject property is being affected by the proposed agenda item may speak or present written submissions to council on this matter. As chairperson, I will read any written briefs from persons unable to attend this public meeting, so they may become part of the official record. Those who wish to speak, should, when invited to speak, clearly state their name and address for the record. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matters contained in the bylaws. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views known. Members of council may ask questions or both make some presentations. The main function of council at the public hearing, however, is to listen to the comments from the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws. The members of council may debate any issues on the bylaws at the third or final reading. The order of proceedings will be as follows. Number one, the community of, the director of community development, Mr. Jazz Gill, will briefly describe the matters under consideration and provide a brief explanation of the proposed bylaws. Number two, the application or agent for the applicant may be invited to provide comments. Number three, all written submissions will form part of the record of the public hearing. Four, oral submissions from the public will be heard, and any further written submissions, if any, will be received. And then, of course, we will conclude. Item number five, the closure of the public hearing. It's important to note that no further submissions, either verbal or written regarding the proposed bylaws, can be made to council following the public hearing. After this public hearing has concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect it believes proper to the representations made at the public hearing. And the issue being discussed today is the Hope zoning bylaw 1368, 2016. Or 1371, 2016, and 1372, 2016. So, Mr. Gill, if you could introduce the topic.
Your worship through you, this application is to rezone and amend the official community plan. The intent for the applicant is to rezone the property from land that's used to country residential in order to do a subdivision. The subdivision proposed right now would be a one-lot subdivision, or basically splitting the property into two. The property is located off of 21792 Union Bar Road. I think that pretty much covers it.
So now the proponents are here, I assume, yes? Sir, you're welcome to say something. You don't have to. No pressure.
No pressure. This speaks for itself. This is exactly what we wanted to do.
Yeah. Okay. So this isn't going to be a particularly controversial issue. We do have a letter on the record here from M.A. Bodnar, resident of the area. Has council seen that or reviewed that?
So I do not have.
Yes. Counselor Dible?
To Mr. Gill, will the subdivision address the right-of-way for the access to the road through the driveway?
Your worship through you, Counselor Dible, sort of prepared for this question. Should council approve this rezoning, the natural progression for the applicant would be to make application for subdivision. Under my jurisdiction, as the approving officer, I have to ensure that the lot created has access typically as part of the PLA, a preliminary letter of assessment, which is issued containing terms and conditions that need to be met by the applicant for the approval of the subdivision. A condition for access for the new lots will be required. At that point, it will be up to the property owners to look at, amend the current easement, or look for a legal remedy to satisfy the condition. It could be the two civil parties sorting their affairs privately. The easement and the right-of-way have no bearing on this rezoning. It's basically a civil agreement between two property owners.
Now we have an opportunity for the public to speak, and I guess, are the Bodners in attendance today?
Your worship?
Yes.
I'm Michael Andrew Bodnar. I'm the son of Mike Bodnar and Joyce Bodnar, co-owner of the property at 21800 Union Bar Road.
Okay.
The easement and right-of-way transits this particular property that's being discussed. Certainly, we've had easement and right-of-way issues for more than the last 10 years, which resulted in a number of letters, as I've stated in my submission. They've yet to be resolved. It would appear that the easement, or this proposal, would change about 100 meters of the easement and right-of-way into a common driveway, which we don't think is appropriate. The easement is not just, our easement and right-of-way is just not an ordinary easement and right-of-way. It has to do with rights below the land, on the land, and above the land. Consequently, this is our only access to Union Bar. So not only will we have a part of our easement and right-of-way turned into a common driveway, I have the transit vehicles through the two backyards of potentially two new neighbors. And given that it's human nature to want a clear land, I have to deal with the owners of the new properties, because it's on the side of the hill, and when you start cutting down trees, it compromises the right-of-way and safety of our, only access to our property. So that's why I submitted our opposition, and at this time, as written, I don't believe that it's appropriate, because it does compromise our access to our property.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Now, there is, as a matter of process, there's essentially a two-part public hearing. One is pertaining to the official community plan amendment by law, which makes the potential subdivision possible. So what I would like to suggest there is that we, we'll ask for quick questions and comments pertaining to the official community plan amendment by law 1371 first, and then we'll move on to the second part. Both related, but we should do them on our reading. So any additional comments, questions? I have a sneaky suspicion that the majority of people are here for the copilot assessment issue.
I would like to say something. I also live on Union Bar Road, and I don't see any problem with that. Every single person up on Union Bar Road has subdivided in order to live there. That easement going through to that property has been like that since I've been here for 36 years, and there was somebody living on that piece of property. So the only way it's going to change is there's going to be two on it, but it's not changing to two, there's only one extra. And that easement's been used forever, since I've lived here. The easement's been there and used by everybody that's gone up that way. So it's not adding any extra traffic, and it's being used as an easement, and the actual easement is on the property that's in question to be subdivided. The easement is not on their property.
It isn't co-owned.
It's not co-owned. And the other thing is, if you want to talk about clearing the trees, I know he's cleared the trees, which have been on the easement, so I don't see how that's a problem, because he cleared the trees and caused the flood himself. So that's why it's too sensitive.
Okay, can we, for the record, can we grab your...
On Carol Morgan.
Okay.
And...
And address as well, yeah. We have to get your address as well, please.
Oh, 21, well, 21771, Union Bar Road.
Yeah, the easement existing now, it's not going to add any difference whatsoever to the Bodners' right on the easement, making it do with what they've been driving up for 15, 20 years. Makes, will make no difference whatsoever to their access width-wise or anything else. It's a standard easement, 66 feet wide. It's been there for like 10 years, who knows, at least 35 years. Nothing's going to change as to their access with anything to do with it, so I don't see what the problem is or the complaints.
Three people using that road when there's, you know, more than three people generally use a road. There'll only be three people using that one easement.
They're all right, even if it's within two, there was residents there for, if we tore that down, because it's in such bad shape, it's going to add one property and one residence, and not two like he's speaking, so that's basically where we're at. Nothing will change on the easement, the rights to the easement, anything to do with the easement, so it's all exactly as it was. We're out of one property to two.
Mr. Bodnar, you have additional comment?
Your worship, this has resulted in a number of letters over more than the last 10 years from both my parents and our lawyers. The easement issues have not yet been resolved. We plow the road, we maintain the road, we pay considerable sums of money, keep it in good working order, yet at a moment's notice, there can be a huge party and a large number of vehicles all over the place without permission. There can, there's motorhomes and trailers parked there seemingly randomly. There's a gate put up on the easement, which restricts my access when I plow, that I cannot turn the vehicle around effectively, because I'm butting up against the gate and a chain barrier that's put up. So the easement issues have not been resolved.
Okay, I'll thank you, Mr. Bodnar.
Mr. Worship, there's, there should be no problem with the easement if they would read the letter of the easement property. We had to revise, or gone over by Fred Green. There is no issues. The only letters have been written by the Bodners, which, we should actually bring those in on the council, see these letters we've received. As the legal aspects, the only problems we've had with the easement is the letters from the Bodners. We have no other issues other than that. We try to keep to ourselves. There's no, but as for applying the easement, the easement legally definitely specified that if they have rights to the easement, they are responsible for taking care of it.
And no gate.
And, and no gate. They don't even allow to have their gate. They don't even allow to have their gates. We've left their gates. They don't even allow to have the gate. We've left their gate there, even though they have no right to have one. They have no right to have.
Okay, I think, you know, I think what we have to do here, this, I think there's obviously a longstanding dispute between two neighbors here, which...
I didn't realize it was.
Well, it appears to be a pre-existing condition, shall we say. So I'm sure working with Mr. Gill on this issue will help resolve things. So what I would like to respectfully suggest is that we encourage additional comments from additional folks, if anyone else has feedback pertaining to either the official community plan amendment by law 1371, or the zoning amendment by law 1372. That will, those comments will be welcomed at this time. Anyone? I feel like the teacher in Ferris Bueller's Dale. That's dating me, because that's the one you're...
Sorry.
Okay, Counselor Croft?
Thank you, your worship. I, I realized that there was a lot of things that were discussed here just a while ago, and I know that Mr. Bodnar had discussed a few things in his comments. One thing that I was just wondering about was, he did have some concerns about tree cutting and whatnot like that, and what I'm thinking is that, and maybe I can get some clarification, is will that be addressed at the, if there's anything actually dealt at that time, that will probably be addressed as opposed to right now, when we're really dealing with a rezoning as opposed to a development?
Your worship through you, Counselor Croft, yes, it will be addressed. The property is located in a high geotechnical and uncertain geotechnical area, and that would be addressed at the development permit stage. And that could be as part of the subdivision, or if there's any sort of contemplated construction there.
And thank you for that. And so, and then the legal matter is really about the easement, which is being dealt with civilly. And then the rezoning portion of it is typically really about what we're dealing with again right now, more so than the other two items. Okay, so thank you for that.
Okay. So, final call. This is under the heading of Speak Now Forever, Hope Peace. Okay, I think that's, that's a wrap for that part of the meeting.
Excuse me.
Yeah?
I just want to make sure that there's a sign-in sheet, Dr. Brandon.
Good point, yeah. If anybody in attendance is supposed to sign in on the sign-in sheet, that's what we're about to do. And if you don't sign in, that bouncer will deal with it. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I'd like to call to order this regular council meeting for April 11. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dible, Counselor Croft, who in a second there? All those in favor? Thank you. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on March 29th, please. Thank you, Counselor Smith, in a second there? For a second, too. Okay, tie game there, little count from middle. Questions or comments pertaining to this?
What does it ping with?
All those in favor? Thank you. Now we have two important delegations here tonight. We're going to start off with Mr. Michael Marchbank, the president and CEO. Every day we have the owner of that, from the Fraser Health Authority, and then Petra Hardy, from the Fraser Health as well, the executive director of Fraser Canyon Hospital. And then we have this Catherine Mead here, who's another VIP from the Fraser Canyon Hospital. And in case I forget, at the end of the presentation, I would like to take this opportunity to, to thank Mr. Marchbank and the rest of his crew here for the leadership and help in looking after Hope community healthcare issues. And as the community is well aware, we've been granted a $500,000 per year fund to be properly used in the Hope community and in the surrounding communities to deal with some healthcare issues which have been identified through careful collaboration by the health authority. So I guess tonight, we're going to flesh out the necessity for this program and how we can get involved. So, Mr. Marchbank, yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very pleased to be here and with Petra and Catherine. I was going to introduce them, but you took care of that for me, so.
Sorry, I stole your fun there.
That's okay, that's okay. The important part was to have them introduced as opposed to who didn't. So thank you very much for that. We have a bit of a presentation, I believe you have it in your packages, and it is up here on the screen, so I'll lead you through that, and, and if you have questions, I'll leave it to you. You can ask along the way, or you can wait till the end. I'm, I'm pleased to see that way, so whatever you wish. So, next slide, please. So moving along to this slide, which is a representation of how we see in Fraser Health and supported by the Ministry of Health, what we see as a community-based system for health. And it's really about supporting the wellness of the members of the community. And so the really interesting thing that I'd like to note about that is the small part that the acute care system and other healthcare system provides for the overall wellness of the community. So you see that up in the, my upper left-hand side. All the other things that are around there that contribute to health are actually, some of which are done, offered by us, but a lot of them aren't. And I think what's, what that really speaks to is, it is a, it is a community-based system. It's not a Fraser Health system. We are certainly part of it, and we're pleased to play a role in that. But it really is about a whole community and how we, how we act. I'm, I'm glad that Hope has supported this concept, and we're pleased to continue to move this concept forward. So, the next slide, please. So we want to do an overview today, the, some of the objectives, where Hope is today, how we're going to approach community collaboration and engagement, and how we're going to go through the process. You can see here, next slide, please. Really, around the $500,000 that we've allocated towards improving the health outcomes in Hope and area, it really is, and we've, we've tried to approach it in a much different way. I, I, we could simply have said to Petra and Catherine, here's $500,000, go spend it where you want to, where you think it's the best. And while I think you would have seen some positive outcomes from that, I'm not truly sure that we could actually see the best outcomes as possible. I think we really need to work with the community. We need to divide, develop programs that are specific to Hope and its environment, and that's what we're really trying to do here. And we're kind of saying, the kind of rules, rules around this is, we want to invest in things that are rooted in prevention and care management, and actually will make a difference in some of the health outcomes that I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes. And so, we are actually trying to think a little bit outside the box on, you know, with this initiative. So, you're a bit of a, I don't like the word pilot, but you're a bit of a guinea pig of that.
Well, I like pilot, better, actually.
So, so, yeah, anyway, there's something about the Canadian, Canadian way of life with pilots and the nature of some things. Anyway, but, I'll stop there. Next slide, please. Really, we want to, we want to look at engaging, and engage in the community. We want to really improve the health and well-being of Hope and the Fraser Canyon for individuals who are at risk, vulnerable populations in the community at large. We want to have a system, as I said, that really talks about collaboration and engagement. We want to get out and talk to people, and you'll see in a little bit later about how we're starting to do that. And we want to identify and prioritize community-based actions and strategies to spend the money that you see at the bottom there. And so, anyway, so, so that's what, that's what we would, that's what we'd like to do. Next slide, please. So every year, we do some health survey all across the Fraser Health Authority, taking a look at, it's called My Health, My Community, and you can certainly find it on our website. And we begin to take a look at some of the outcomes to develop, to determine what a community, a healthy community looks like. And what I'm, what I want to focus on is some areas of good performance. You can see this strong sense of community belonging, more walking and cycling as a mode to commute, and obviously, a much shorter commute time than average. I can tell you that, I was just talking to the chief administrative officer, and his commute to work is much, much shorter than mine for example. So, and I think that leads to the potential for having much better health outcomes than he walks and rides to work and I sit in the car for 45 minutes. So, I think those are some of the, certainly some of the positives of a healthy community. The next slide, please, shows a demographic, a demographic profile of, of Hope. And so, you actually have in the, in Hope, you have about 7,284 residents, split between males and females, with males being a slightly higher number. That's probably a bit different than other parts of the health authority. Your population is shrinking a bit, you know some of this. And it's aging, and so you have a higher percentage of older residents than other parts of the health authority. So you can just see what that looks like there. Next slide, please. So, some of the risk factors that we look at in terms of the current community health state, these are, are, are areas that we look at when we are looking at what would indicate some positive or less than positive outcomes. So you can see here that your, your income is lower than the rest of the health authority. Your percentage with university degrees is lower, percentage with not enough to eat at times is higher, percentage of residents living alone is also higher. And although you do spend more time commuting, you're many are, you're just slightly below average in terms of the amount of activity that you're getting. So these are contributors to health outcomes in the community. Next slide, please. So when we look at some of the areas of concern that, that are there, you see that these are areas where motor vehicles and accidental causes, and what we call is years of lives lost, which is an index we use, you can see there that you are higher than most other parts of the health authority. To some degree, that's a function of your location, and the time you spend in cars and things like that, but it, it does actually show some of those factors as well. So, next slide, please. So these are also some areas of concern that we are looking at and that directly affect the health of your outcomes, the health of your population. So you can see that your percentage of population over 65, and the reason we pick that age is, is not because it's the older retirement age, it's actually when you begin to consume more health services. The younger you are, the generally less you consume health services. The previous slide, which showed accidents and those kinds of things, they would tend to be younger people, but they're not nearly as prevalent as people over 65. So we really do begin to look at, as a percentage, the burden of disease would be higher with the older, the older the population. You can see that your life expectancy in Hope is considerably less than the Fraser Health Authority. Six years would be quite a significant number. I can tell you averages are, can be a bit misleading, but you are still, even though you would appear to be six years below the average, you're four years below the next lowest community. So the next lowest community is Mission, and so there, so, I, I don't mean to depress you, but part of...
Too late.
That's not the intent, but I think in order to make the best decisions possible, we have to have the most current information we can, regardless on how, how, how discouraging it may appear. Hypertension is, is higher here, so that's high blood pressure. A smoking rate that is higher than the rest of the Fraser Health, probably the least healthy thing that you can do in your life, is smoke. Cardiovascular disease, COPD, diabetes, they're all higher than the rest of the health authority that you see here. So that certainly contributes to the life expectancy and other, the burden of healthcare in the community. The next slide is again some more areas of concern, and you can see this is around mental health issues and substance use issues as well. So you can see again that you are, there is some work to do here. So you can see that there. The next slide, please. So... So, I think what you've seen in the previous slides is really what drove the Fraser Health Authority to make this commitment to you in terms of the $500,000. We are not making that commitment to any other community in the Health Authority. We are making it here, so I do want to, I think you can see why we made the decision that we made. So, what we want to do is we really do want to have a structured collaboration and engagement process to, to work with the community and the stakeholders to begin to get some ideas and some, some places where we might want to spend some of that money, if you like. So, you can see some of the consultation we're going to do. In fact, the seniors' population consultation is set for April 14, so it is actually starting. One of the things that I will say is, you probably don't know me very well. Petra may know me a little bit better. I tend to be somewhat impatient, so I don't want consults. I want consultation, but I don't want consultation to last forever. We have to make some decisions and get on with things. So, I will say that to you, so my commitment is this isn't going to be consulting forever. We need to, we need to work through this and where to spend the money. So, we'll be working with the Chilliwack Division of Family Practice and other stakeholders in terms of the seniors. We will engage with Child and Youth Mental Health and Substance Use Local Action Team. There's local providers, including First Nations and the Valley Youth Partnership for Engagement. When we look at the Child and Youth Consultation, the Community Consultation, we will look at all parts of the community, including the Boston Bar and First Nations. And then, on April the 28th, our last one will be, we'll be looking at the Open Area Healthy Communities Committee, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with, which is comprised of over 38 seasons in six First Nations communities. And we want to look at the top strategies that have come from that and have a discussion around that. Next slide, please. Really, each of the sessions that I've outlined will really inform the next right up until the Community Planning Day, which was the last one on April 28th, so that we can begin to look at priorities, the ability for groups to identify their priorities in rank order. It's easy sometimes to say, we want this, this, and this, and this. It's somewhat harder sometimes to say, we want this, and we can't have any of the other, this is the one we really want. So, we want to make sure we're going to focus as much as we can. Next slide, please. So, we have a, a structure that, that we're looking at. And then, it gets up to the Fraser Health Executive Committee to make the decisions on how best to move the, how best to go through it. I will say that you may think that we're only going to concentrate on those things that are strictly health, strictly health-related. We will look at different aspects of it, because health is much broader than just what goes on in the hospital and what goes on in residential and home support. We're looking beyond that, so we are, we do have some flexibility in that. There are some limits that we also have, but we are looking to broaden it out and see what, see what the best, the best programs or initiatives are that will improve population health. We're not looking at a specific subset, we're looking at population health. Next slide, please. Part of what we're doing as well is we design, or we will design upfront in the valuation process. And so, if we are going to give $100,000 to X, we will want to know what X is going to deliver and the timelines that it's going to deliver it. Because money is a scarce resource, and we want to make sure we're making the best use of it. So, we will be setting up that process ahead of time so we know what the deliverables we're looking at are and how we'll measure them. The Institute on Health System Transformation and Sustainability is a third-party organization that will help us do that. Because sometimes we can become myopic at times, so we want to try and avoid that. So, the next slide, please. And we will review the findings from the Community Consultation. We'll come back to you to discuss those and what they look like. I'm sure you'll become aware of them as we go through the process, but we will check back with you, so you'll look, can look forward to another visit from us. And then, once we've done that, we will publicly communicate what priorities, strategies were identified and what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Next. So, back to that original slide that we had. And so, we're hoping that a lot of the other things around the circle and so on can actually be enhanced so that we can make that difference in terms of the health outcomes for the people as a whole, they're right. So, so we do want to work with you. We'll figure out where to allocate these dollars and move forward together. So, that concludes my presentation. Petra and Catherine and I would be pleased to attempt to answer any questions.
A quick question here, I'm sure council will have many, but, or a few, anyway. But a question pertaining to the statistics on mortality rates and frequency of smokers in our community. It appears obviously that there's a double the rate of a Fraser Health average, which is obviously very, very alarming. Now, is there a statistic that backs out the, the, shall we say, the statistical anomaly for mortality rates? Is there some correlation you can put in there with smokers? Like, how many of the people are smokers that passed on early? Is there a, is there a way to determine that? Because there's, there's some really good statistics here, but...
Do you have some cancer rates that you didn't put in here? But it's, it's an overall, overall cancer rate that potentially related to smokers, but not necessarily...
Smoking is just evil. You're six times more likely to die. If you smoke, you're much more likely to get COPD. So, people may think it's cancerous, and it's just not one cancer, it's other cancers. So, it's just that. There's no other way to put it. And it contributes to many other reasons for mortality. Is it, can we define it quite the way or ask it probably enough? But the evidence is clear for that. The higher the levels of smoking, the more variety of diseases that will affect your life.
So, do you think there's a way you can glean out more detail on the folks who do pass on? There must be a statistical number on how many were smokers.
We could take a look at that, I can't answer.
Because that would be interesting from a programming perspective. You know, how big, how big an impact is this?
But it's not just, it's just not on cancer. There are a variety of other things that you could die of.
No, no, true, but out of the, out of the listed conditions, how many were actually smokers?
Oh, okay, okay.
So, the COPD folks, how many were smokers out of that? Were they 80% of the people that had that condition smokers? Or was it 10, 20%?
I would suspect for COPD, it'd almost be 100%. We will check on that.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Counselor.
Thank you, through you. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for taking notice that we are in need of some assistance in our community because we don't want it to get to the state where we see us on the news with other issues that we certainly can't handle. So, that's a step in the right direction, I think. I think I have about three questions. I'm also wanting to see the outcome now. So, I don't think it's going to happen today, but we will certainly work on it. So, what, what I'm wondering is, so let's say we get to the stage where we have something that we're really going to sink our teeth into. This is the direction, we're going to spend some money there. So, will that service model be required to also provide a outcomes measurement for success, since we're the pilot?
Yes.
And will that be a standard then to maybe carry on to the next location, let's say? Not Hope.
At this point, it's a pilot that will, as I said in my, in my presentation, we certainly do want to have measures that go where we invest the money, how we can measure that.
That's what I'm interested in.
And we will be doing that. We'll, we'll wait and see before we talk about other communities.
Okay.
This is a test.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing is, of course, so let's say we had three projects that were excellent. We chose one, but the other two addressed other big issues in our community. Is there more funding? And is this seed money? Or is there money in perpetuity? Or at least, maybe not in perpetuity, but at least to continue it if phase one is excellent and showing great outcomes? Or do we just stop, $500,000, hope, we're gone? What do we do?
So, as the mayor said in his own comments, the $500,000 is ongoing. It's not one-time funding where I want to fund something for a year and then take it away, but it's not our intent. We won't be doing that. If there's, we're always willing to look at good ideas. I can't make commitments, obviously, but we're always willing to look at good ideas and, and see what we can do. But we are starting here, and, and we hope to see some positive outcomes.
Thank you, and then one last question. So, being that Hope is, is in the middle of diverse areas that surround us, and I'm sure that's a contribution to some of our issues, where's the healthiest community in Fraser County?
Well, I can tell you, generally speaking, the healthiest community in Fraser would be Burnley.
Really?
And, and you saw that in some of the statistics. In the healthiest community in B.C., I would be hard-pressed, I would guess, this would be an educated guess, please don't make a note. But I think, I think it's actually Richmond.
Is where?
Richmond.
Richmond, I see.
They have much, so for example, they do, they do very well in terms of some of the prevention initiatives. So, they're very high, for example, in the female population, they have very high rates of mammography, screen for mammography, absmears. They just...
The prevention side.
Prevention. And part of their ethnic makeup, I think, contributes to their life expectancy as well. So, they would be, I think they would be the healthiest community.
The life expectancy is actually about the B.C. average.
So, what I'm just asking for is clearly because if they've done some things, we don't need to rein that the wheel on, then they would be maybe good advocates or mentors to help us get into a program, so to speak.
For sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Doug.
Just a couple of questions, just around timeframe and process.
Sure.
So, it sounds like by the end of April, this will be wrapped up the consultation process. What timeframe do you have in respect to implementation? And what will implementation then look like? Will it be, let's say there's five projects? Who will, who will decide? How will it be decided as to how much money will go to each project? And will it go up for a request with proposal? Or go for R.P.?
I think we want to get into the, into the process before we make those kinds of detailed decisions and see what we're looking at. Because it may be, well, we want to spend $350,000 on this, so there's not much left. So, we want to really allow the process to be open. And in terms of implementation, I would like to see decisions made probably before the end, before summer starts. And then, implementation wrapping up, probably, the summer is always difficult, but sometime early fall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our delegation. And I guess I should put in a nice plug for our local administration staff in front of the boss, you know? So, Ms. Partey and Ms. Weep, very impressed with the fact that we actually, I'm assuming Mr. Marchbank is a man of vision. That's an assumption. But I'm assured that the decision by the Health Authority to grant us the $500,000 per annum was a result of some fairly vocal voices at the local level. So, thank you for your efforts here.
Absolutely.
We appreciate your good effort.
Good advocate for your health care, health area, you know, the rest of all.
So, the public consultation meeting will be on the 14th, the golf course?
Some of them were started, yeah.
The first one?
Yeah, the first one. And the last one's on the 28th.
There's one on the 19th, that's for the youth, child, and minors.
Yeah.
The 19th, from 6:30 till 8:00. And that's at the Silver Creek Elementary School. And, yeah, the one this week is at the golf course. It's again from 6:30 till, open doors is at 6:00. 6:30 we hope them to start till 1:30. And then, on the 27th, it's in Boston Bar, in the Long House in Anderson, actually. And then, the 28th is happening here.
Sounds very good. Thank you all.
Am I allowed to say something relevant to that? Where people can find that information? Or am I not allowed to talk?
What's that?
Am I allowed to say something that might help people get to that actual information for future reference?
Sure, we'll just, yeah.
Open Area Healthy Communities has a Facebook page, and information related to these public information sessions will be and is posted there. If anybody's on Facebook, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Same for you?
Yes, thank you. You can stay for the rest of the meeting.
I'm, I'm sure that you have a long one, of course.
Thank you.
I all know nothing about it.
Thank you. Okay, our second delegation is led by Michelle Richardson, who is a Cock Collet resident, as most people know. It's a presentation pertaining to the Assessment Authority changes that have affected residents. Now, Andre, I think under the subject of expectation management, council will certainly listen. As I think everyone here recognizes, the B.C. Assessment Authority is under the jurisdiction of a province. I think the low-hanging fruit here is that we have a very active and hard-working MLA, so I think a natural result of this meeting could be that council potentially, and it's obviously majority rules here, it's not be run in the shoulders, the majority of council. And a natural byproduct could be that we will set up a meeting with our MLA, Lori Throneas, to voice our concerns revocably as to the problems with the B.C. Assessment Authority and the fact they don't have a cap on the level of the increases per year. So, that's, there's no magic wand at the municipal level, but I think if we work together, we can maybe come up with some solutions. Ms. Richardson, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Put my glasses on because I'm at that age now. Reading glasses.
I feel your hand.
I want to thank everybody for making some time for us today. I want to start off the meeting by inviting anybody who's involved with this delegation tonight to just stand up so people can identify themselves as late-foran owners out there at Colgate. Just so they get a sense of who we managed to wrestle up here in a week.
They kind of figured out it wasn't our personal charm.
Many people wish they were at work, but we have obviously submitted letters and other things from people as much as we could in the amount of time available to us. The other piece that I wanted to invite you to do, and I really appreciate the preamble upfront there, the worship, because we do recognize that the District of Hope does not set the assessment levels that they are bound by, you know, legislation on how you apply taxes based on those things. So, we're certainly well aware of that, and we are all individually as appropriate taking up our concerns with B.C. assessment directly. Our, our purpose for tonight is really to look at ways that we can work together to potentially minimize the financial impact and other impacts that this result has had. So, unless you're, you know, anywhere from 300 to over 455% increases. And so, with that, I want to invite everybody in the room, including mayor, council, and staff, to put themselves in the shoes of a resident and imagine that your assessment has just been increased by 400% or 300%, and your taxes are going up to $10,000, $12,000, $28,000 a year. So, I just wanted to kind of... I just want to kind of think about that, because we, we really want to come to some kind of solution. And, you know, we all do recognize that some increases are required, and that's not the, the issue. It is just the severity of it and the fast increase that kind of caught all of us aback, right? So if something had been increasing gradually, as you say, you can kind of budget for it and plan for it and decide whether, you know, it's worth staying here for. So those are the kinds of things that we're, we're totally aware of. On top of that, I think that some of the, the issues that are important to consider is how that impacts the attractiveness of Hope to people outside Hope, and whether someone is going to be willing to pay twelve thousand dollars a year in taxes to live in Hope. And, and so that's another side of the equation as well. We're in a, in a situation in town here where we're, I have a declining population, I know our academic development policy is looking for new residents, and so these are the kinds of things that could be, could impact that, the attractiveness of Hope to the outside world. As well, it may, it may seem to be a bit of an isolated incident, but this has happened in other communities as well, and it also has the potential to repeat itself as Hope becomes a more popular place to live. If that nickel mine ski hop goes in, all of a sudden, you know, everybody in Hope could be facing a significant increase in their property value. So I really am encouraging everyone to be thinking about a solution to this problem once and for all, as opposed to just, this is a singular issue, you know, isolated to us out at the lake. So, you could, as you can imagine, you know, facing down double to triple to quadruple taxes in one year is not something that is an easy pill to swallow. And people, you know, there are a number of residents out that live at the lake, that are seniors on fixed incomes, have had these homes in their families for a really long time, and all of a sudden, they're, you know, trying to figure out how in the heck they're going to afford to pay for all this, right? So that's one piece of it. And, and the other, the other side is, you know, there are, these numbers are the kind of numbers that would have people considering selling their places, because if you're coming up with a thousand to fifteen hundred bucks a month in after-tax income just to pay your property taxes, you know, that's a lot of dough, right? So that could potentially impact everybody that, you know, that's in that situation out there. So, there, as, as a result of this whole thing, it's actually brought, you know, a few different things to light for me personally and for a number of people that I've spoken to around the lake. And looking for ways that other communities have dealt with this, and, and other solutions, because we didn't want to just come here with a bunch of problems and no ideas. And so, we know that you guys are the experts in terms of what, what is possible. We have had some ideas that we thought could be worked around, if not immediately, it was something that would be worked in, as I say, we're looking for something in the long term that would solve this for every resident if Hope had ever came into, you know, this situation. In Vancouver recently, they've, they've got an averaging program that came into play where they averaged the land values over a few years, and then they taxed them on that. I recognize that involves going to the province, as you say, and, you know, there's some lobbying things that can be done. So that would certainly be something that we would be looking to, the appropriate authorities to engage in on the behalf of, of our community. Also, the capping thing is, as you had mentioned, Your Worship, looking at, okay, so how, either capping how much something can go up every year, or even putting a cap on how much a taxpayer in Hope would pay. It doesn't cost any more to pave a road in front of my, in my house than it costs to pave a road in front of any house in town, and yet I'm going to be paying four times as much as anybody else in Hope. And that's, I know the nature of an assessment-based taxation system, but that doesn't mean that that system is working properly. So, you know, looking at the bigger picture of how properties in British Columbia are taxed, and Hope potentially taking a leadership role in some kind of reform that has some level of equity for every property owner in, in the province. So whether it's, say, putting a cap on it, or whether, the other thing that had been suggested was looking at, you know, how big is your property? What's the usable space on your property? Let's assign a per-square-foot value to every property in Hope, make it uniform, and everybody in town pays the same amount per square foot for their property in taxes. So again, these are big-picture provincial-level initiatives that, you know, the, somebody had to take an initiative in Vancouver to get the bylaw through, somebody had to be the leader. I know that there are other companies, or other municipalities that look at zones, taxing different zones within their cities, different rates. I understand Mission and Abbotsford are doing things like that. So looking potentially, Cockalay is a zone, downtown is a zone, Silver Creek is a zone. So I'm really looking, we're trying to be creative here, and also be fair, and also sort of look at the, the big picture, long-term situation, and so that we can solve it kind of once and for all. And, you know, I also, you know, there's, there are certainly some things, obviously, that are within the district's control to change immediately, i.e. the mail rate. If you're getting a whole lot more money out of our area, then maybe you don't, maybe isn't a higher mail rate. I don't know if that's being considered in the current budget, whether you actually have all the numbers from Cockalay yet, and have those have been incorporated or not. So that's another piece of the puzzle, as far as we're concerned. Obviously, that's going to help everybody in Hope, but like I say, we're looking for solutions that are, you know, with the entire community in mind in the long run. The other piece, I know that working with advantage, Hope through the district, you guys did a revitalization tax exemption program, where you defer payment on increases, increased values when people improve their business basids and make investments that increase the land value or the, the overall B.C. assessment. So maybe there's something that could be thought of or done around that. Maybe interest-free loans to pay, so we can, you know, are not charging interest on these tax, big huge tax bills for a few years while people get themselves kind of situated. You know, we sort, we, we, the other piece too is that even within that Cockalay Lake area, there is, there is inequity in the services that are delivered to those, some portions of the lake. Some of us have water and sewers, some of us have gas, some of us have, you know, fire protection, some of us don't. So those are all different considerations as well. So there, there may be some things that could be done if we're contributing a large, you know, when I did the quick math on the percentage of budget that our lakes went home, or would be contributing to this year's budget, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six percent of the overall budget money would be coming from us. So that's a pretty significant amount of money from a very small portion of our community. So potentially, there would be additional investment made out there. You know, I, I would, let me say, I'm just looking for, for ways that we could make it fair and equitable, and, and make it not such a huge burden on, on the people that are living out there. Do we love the lake? Do we recognize that some increases have to happen? Yeah, we do. But this is the extreme, and we're looking for, for ways to solve the problems and work together to do that. And, you know, I also see opportunities to initiate some, some conversations with our, you know, MLA, and look at the bigger picture on how B.C. Assessment is done. Because one of the things that has come to light in a big screaming way out there at the lake in these assessments is it's all over the map. They're not consistent on costing out properties based on how the land's been improved, or, I mean, that their information is not reliable, and so therefore, if we're basing taxation on some kind of assessment that is not consistent and reliable, that's a whole nother level of inaccuracy and unfairness. So to me, there are better ways to, to tax people on properties and, and other things that are, they make more sense, that, you know, you know how many square feet of lot of space we have here in Hope. We, it makes it, you know, we assign a square-foot value to the property to collect taxes, and it doesn't go up and down with the winds of the market. And, you know, we have a bunch of space, we need to take care of that space, we need roads, we need utilities, we need lamps, light posts, we need whatever we need. And that brings all the community members to the same place of paying the same thing for the same service. So, you know, it seems to me that that system is quite broken, and it could be an opportunity to, for Hope to take a leadership role in writing it. So, you know, the, the other piece of, of that too is that, you know, we're not at the lake, we're not just compared to other communities to live in, we're also compared by potential purchasers to other lakes to buy at, because there is that component of recreational property out that way. So we're competing our, our properties with the Okanagan, Harrison, with Cultis. And when you compare, you know, those, those things, and then you look at, okay, well, what are the taxes out there? What are the, you know, all those other, we have a lot of limitations in what we can do in our lake. We, you know, if you're trying to build on the lake right now, and I'm probably, I think I'm about the most recent person that's tried, tried to build on my part of the lake, and we have a couple of new, there's a, there are a lot of restrictions and limitations to doing stuff on our lake now. So those are other factors that are, that are in play. So making sure that we are in a bit of a unique situation in that respect, in that we are, the people are shopping not only for a community to live in sometimes, but they're also shopping for a vacation home. And, you know, we would love, you know, to have the, you know, those kinds of people looking at Hope and saying, okay, you know, this is a place to go. But when our taxes are at where they are, and, you know, that's going to make it harder for us to sell our houses even if we want to, which then brings the value down. And so, you know, it's just that whole big picture, right? So we would love to find a way for everybody to stay happily in their homes and continue to enjoy Hope and, and the lake. And we love this community. And, you know, we're here in a spirit of, of cooperation and collaboration. And I guess that's, you know, that's.
All right, good presentation, I appreciate that. There's a couple of thoughts I would like to just put on the, on the table, just share some ideas. And none of these ideas are meant to be disrespectful to the concerns here tonight, but just, I think, as a matter of clarifications, there's some food for thought. Now, obviously, from a council perspective, this would be a very easy issue to deal with if all of the real estate in Hope went up a comparable amount of money. When we set mill rates as a council and staff, we have to essentially pick average values, because there, there is a deviation amongst properties, obviously. And if one property went up two hundred percent, we can't adjust the mill rate to only please that one, one party, or say, a dozen parties. We have to kind of, so that's an awkward and unfortunate situation we have to deal with. The other thing is, there is a provision, and I think as everyone knows here, or hopefully, as everyone knows, there is an appeal mechanism through the B.C. Assessment Authority which allows property owners to argue their case. And I guess the golden test is, if you can legitimately argue in honesty and with, with a letter from a Realtor or an appraiser, that your property is worth less than the drafted assessed value from the B.C. Assessment Authority. I have yet to hear them argue with that point, but if you, for instance, to pick an example, and the lady is not here tonight, so I won't, I won't, I will use her as an example without using her name, a widow from around Cockalay, I guess, probably, that's a cat out of the bag there already. But she phoned me up a little while ago, and she said, well, this is ridiculous, the assessment increase. And she mentioned him. And I said, yeah, that's not a good number. And I said, well, you know, I didn't know if she was computer savvy or whatever, so I'm more than happy to flash at my computer, write you a letter, and you can send it in, and, you know, talk to your Realtor friends and, and state your case. Because, but I said that the first question we have to ask, and the most important question is, is the, the drafted assessed value more than you would sell the property for? And she said, well, I wouldn't sell it for that, it's worth way more. So I mean, unfortunately, that's an awkward situation. The B.C. Assessment Authority is supposed to represent the, you know, market value of that year. So, and this, this comment is not meant to be insensitive, but I think the good news is, a lot of people got a real deal for a long time from a tax point of view, because there's people that have had properties, and I know of friends of mine that live there, they've got an eight hundred thousand dollar house, and they're, they're paying taxes on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house. So, you know, for a while, it was kind of a good deal, now obviously not so much. Now, there is as well for seniors, and I believe for people on disabilities, if I'm not mistaken, there's a tax deferral program, which the province has in place. And this is, this is not, there's no means test attached to the tax deferral program. So you can be a single person, family, whatever, you could have a million dollars in the bank, and just decide that deferring your taxes is a better fiscal move. So what you do is you sign up for this program, and the information's available upstairs during tax time. And essentially, the province gives us the money that, that you would pay for your taxes, but they charge you, I think, two percent annual interest. So for people that are established residents of the community, that, that are going to have a difficult time dealing with the annual taxes of whatever size property they have in Hope, as long as it's their principal residence, I believe is a test, that's also a very, very helpful program. A lot of people around lakes use that, a lot of people in Vancouver, for instance, use that, because they just, they can't keep up to the taxes as their property, you know, quadruples in value, whatever. So that's a very useful program. I think the only proviso there that you can't have delinquent, or, or you can't be behind in your taxes in any way the year before. You have to deal with the current taxes only. So you, you referenced the Vancouver real estate, which is, was a very good reference. I think the easy part of their issue is that the majority of Vancouver real estate skyrocketed similar time. So it was, I think, a little easier for them to deal with it. I don't think we have the ability to do sort of a neighborhood tax rate, where we can say, all the good folks in Silver, you know, like in Silver Creek or Cockalay, around the lake, get a specific mill rate. I stand to be corrected, but I don't, don't know if that will go over too legislatively.
Your Worship, there is a provision in the community charter for assessment averaging, similar to your proposal number one, I guess, in the delegation here. It applies to either one or more property classes or, or groups within the classes, and it's section 198. So if you want to reference that if you haven't already. So that is possible, certainly, and the regulations have to be fleshed out. I believe it's in the year the taxation is applied for, the, the bylaw must be in place. And of course, it's all subject to the Lieutenant Governor Council, so there's no guarantee, but clearly they have to analyze and approve. And just to clarify as well, taxation is based by law on the assessed value of the land in improvements. So you can't really fill that form out if it's in the community.
Yeah, there's no parcel tax concept.
Well, unless they changed it, unless you just decided to change it to her, and that's what I'm saying. They could just decide that that's not really working and change it.
So the, the averaging concept, if approved by Lieutenant Governor, would, would apply to all properties within, say, the single-family residential class, correct?
Well, looking at, very quickly at the, at the regulations, you could examine particular types of property within types of property within a property class or a property in prescribed circumstances. So potentially groups of properties like those. There definitely have to be more research, but I don't believe that certainly it will be in time to pass legislation that would be applicable to this tax year. But certainly, council may consider directing staff to look at future years to assist in averaging, but again, it would be worth seeing if there's a trend other than one big bump.
Now, just a question through to our delegation here before we get council questions. Now, are the, have the majority of people with extraordinary tax increases, have they appealed the?
Yes.
And what were the results? Has anyone had a chance to, to say, hey, you're $300,000 more than I would sell it for?
Not yet. Well, they seem to, in that room, like there's a process, you send the information in, you have hearing with a panel. They seem to be, you know, taking roughly 50 grand off, just in general, even regardless of how much improvement had been made on the land, how, what, how buildings were on the land. It really was, you know, probably between 45 and 70 total. If there was something wrong, different than with the house, then that was significant, then that might get it up a little bit more than the 50, I think. So there was not yet any significant reductions, but I understand that there are a couple in the works to come because there's a secondary appeal process that everybody has until they second to get their cases in front of the BCS Assessment and get their final assessment done. So anything that may have not been considered in that room, you know, last, in the first go-around, will be put in front of them again, on a one-to-one with further information and then they'll get their final ruling. But I understand there are a couple that are going to be coming down fairly similarly.
So that, that would probably be based on Realtors sending letters to, into, to substantiate the claims of the property owner that the assessment is.
Yeah, or estimates for improvements that are not in place, that other people have, that, you know, like if you haven't improved your land and you're being charged for land that, like equivalent to land that's been significantly improved, then there's a larger discrepancy there as well. So those are all, you know, you know, they'll be, they'll take pictures and submit, you know, I mean, March at the lake in February, the lake isn't really the time of year, people have their boats out, so, you know, to take photographs before the first hearing was, you know, basically if you were out on the lake last summer taking pictures, you could see, you know, like a little slice of land somewhere. So basically people then have that opportunity to get out and take a more specific approach to, you know, comparing land improvements, buildings, outbuildings, all those kinds of things, so that they can say, okay, well, this is why there's a discrepancy, this is why I think this one's worth much more, or, you know, or ours is worth less, or whatever.
So in your opinion, have the majority of concerned property owners exercised the appeal process?
I would say, I'd say probably in the neighborhood of half, I'm thinking, maybe a little more than half, but.
Just ask for show hands, Michelle.
Oh, yeah, anybody in this room, yeah.
Anybody in here?
Anybody, anybody doing the second appeal in here?
Second appeal?
So everybody's.
Anybody have any success?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. Well, they have to, it may second actually to, to do their second appeal. So I know that there are a number of people that are in the planning process for that right now, only because I don't know, this isn't everyone at the lake, so I just kind of based on what I gathered from the email and the communications that we've all had with one another, it sounds like about half of them are going forward again because they don't have the result. And I mean, another potential might be, you know, maybe even the district phoning BCS Assessment and advocating for some kind of, you know, graduated increase over, you know, it's a phone call that could potentially be made to say, hey, like these guys have been hit really hard. I mean, they're hearing it from us, obviously, but, you know, if the district was willing to step in and even just say, hey, what can we do to help you guys, obviously they dropped the ball if they haven't been, you know, or we haven't had a lot of housing sales. And, you know, one will argue whether they're comparing apples to apples or not, you know, they're comparing, even the sale comparisons are so vastly different that to generalize is, you know, it's crazy. So, but those are all, like I say, those are fights we're all taking on individually. But if the district could say, hey, we have a whole group of people over here that, as you know, are getting nailed really hard, you know, is there anything you can do to, like you say, cap the increase for a few years, or give them a few years to get up to that place, right?
Sir, just more comments than anything. I've, oh, sorry, two sirs, I should be name specific. Go ahead, Counselor Smith and Mr. Cameron.
I've gone through this appeal process myself about two years ago. As many of the landowners gone for, I know it's money out when you're looking at possible big tax increase, you don't want to put any more money out, but appraisals on the properties and stuff too, that's a big backing for this BCS Assessment process, like the appeal process. I, we found that it was beneficial for us on our, it was considerable amount less on the appraisal than what was obviously being assessed by BCS Assessment. And that was a good backing, it was money well spent that brought the, basically the taxes down and paid for itself in the first year of that. But you can also get a scare on that too, if you do do an appraisal and find out your land is worth more because Cockalake is going to be essentially one of those places that you can't build anymore around there, right? So it's paying for buck, like you compare to Okanagan, well, Lake Okanagan, or Okanagan Lake and all those other lakes, Penctecton and stuff, they have so much more property they can eventually develop. Cockalake is a very small lake for proportions, so you're going to be looking, that's could be a scare too down the road, is it's.
Inventory land.
Inventory land, yeah, it's, it's short-lived on that, but I think if any of the people that are doing the appeal, your appraisal program is going to be probably your one big backing. I'm sure some of you have done it, but it's going to be your best bang for you with them. I know they're tough to deal with.
Mr. Cameron and then Counselor Dible.
No, I was just going to say, it doesn't pertain exactly to what we're asking here, but just to give sort of a background, I mean, I expect that taxes should go up, but the strange thing in terms of addressing BCS Assessment and so on, I mean, us and a few folks do, my property tax, my property assessment last year went down by $6,000. And then this year it goes up about 250%. So I mean, it was just bizarre. So, so you certainly didn't have any warning of what was coming. I mean, I knew, yes, it should go up, but not, not the kind of way that it did go up because, as I say, it actually went down last year.
Yeah, very strange, isn't it?
Well, and I'm wondering too, Kevin, I know you've come from Anmore and I imagine that they would have faced similar situations as Anmore grew from a sleepy little, you know, town to this mega-million dollar community. I mean, maybe you have some insider history on what they, how they did this, I don't know.
If you have any insight, Mr. Dick, then go, feel free.
Well, I don't have a lot of specific knowledge about the assessments in Anmore, but I knew they are climbing like everywhere else. However, there is vacant land there to develop still, so the, the pressure on the real estate wouldn't be what you're facing out at the lake. However, you know, Anmore residents are used to 9% tax increases per year, so I, it's a little bit of a different situation there.
Well, and the other side of it too is, I mean, as much as, yeah, there's not much land on Cockalake, Cockalake is tiny, right? Like was far as desirable lakes to be, if you've ever been on the lake in the summer trying to do anything, it's like a bathtub. So, you know, like Okanagan to me is, or even Harrison or Cultis, at least you can get out and do something without, you know, sitting with your dog and getting, you know, like holding, hold your kids, you know, like, so, you know, that's when it comes to the stuff that you do on that lake, right? That's another factor when people are making a decision about lakes, it's not just, oh, how much can I build there, but it's also, how much can I do on that lake, right?
Counselor Dible and then a friendly gentleman in the front row.
All right, just a, well, a couple of comments, I suppose. So I'm assuming that the spike in assessment is due to the spike in real estate across the province, so to speak, and it's now reached out to this end. Have we confirmed that from BCS Assessment at all?
It's based on some sales around the lake.
Okay, so it's based on that.
But loosely based on sales numbers around the lake.
Okay. So just a couple of things, and I, I think that for this year, I'm sort of hearing that we sort of maybe missed a window of opportunity to do anything for this tax year, but I am in favor if we're able to, to write a letter of support to BCS Assessment to say that this, you know, has come to our attention and, you know, a concern across, you know, the community that as prices increase, that this can be something that can affect all of us. So I would be in favor of that. And I would be in favor of looking at an averaging by law, like we could look at that for the next, next year, because if we had that in place, we could have done something for this year, but that window opportunity has closed. So for the coming years, I think that that could be something that we could look at. So I would be in favor of that as well. So other than that, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, Laurie's promise could be involved in some way.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, that's really what all we were hoping to accomplish is to get some ideas going, to get some commitment, some terms of some kind of action as opposed to, oh, yeah, like you say, I mean, and we've heard that before, oh, you're getting a really good deal out there, suck it up people right now. You know, it's, it's a really tough pill to swallow and, you know, like you say, if it had been gradually increasing and we got to here over the last five years, there's going to be a conversation to be had. So I really appreciate, you know, your willingness to look for solutions and come up to things that'll work for us, so thank you.
Just another comment, and I don't know, maybe Ms. Burrows, you can answer this, but is this something that could be taken to UVCN for a resolution just around having the province look at BCS Assessment and when there's an increase that's over, you know, 100%, that they automatically something's built in? Is that something that could be taken?
Your worship, that's absolutely something that could be taken. And just a reminder too, I mean, Vancouver, as mentioned earlier, Vancouver has their own charter, so they already have more flexibility built in. So maybe UVCN would lobby to have the municipalities have that flexibility themselves. Of course, the province loses control and sometimes they're not so keen to do that. But you're right, Counselor Dible, could bring it to UVCN.
Friendly gentleman in the front row.
Your worship, I think, you know, part of the thing, like when you look at, it's just a spike, you know, the speed of it, right? I think that's a frustration with a lot of us. Like I think, and especially for, you know, the senior people, I really feel for them. I mean, for us younger people, I guess we'll just work harder and make it all happen, but for the older people, it's really unfair, they want to live out their dream at the lake, they've maybe been there for 20, 30 years. And I know you can't differentiate too much, but, you know, we own, not pumping up my tires, we own a lot of property in Rosedale on a dairy farm and we have a lot of property in Merritt on a ranch. And if you look how the assessment goes up in the mill rate, and I'm part of that, I sit on a committee that looks at that every year and will tweak it a little bit and will go up a little bit, just like everything else is, yet here, all of a sudden, we get an increase like that. And I think it's just a process, and I don't want this thing to go retro and say, well, you know, we got such a good deal that maybe we should go back and pay a bit more for the last five years, I don't know how far I'm going, but what I have seen is that it is like, somebody, did somebody drop the ball, or did you council get up one morning and said, look, hey, that thing is so, there's 5% more money for us over there, let's go get it. And I'm, I'm just saying, the process of the speed has gone up is totally wrong, so thank you.
Your worship, for you, I did a brief stint at BCS Assessment back in 2008 and I think the market numbers were almost similar. At that time, what BCS Assessment did was, or municipalities, was it froze the actual role to a previous year. But I don't know what sort of advocacy was given to them, from who or what. I don't know if the municipality did it or was it the provincial government?
And for Mr. Gill's personal protection, let the record show he now works for the District of Hope, and it's not moonlighting for the BCS Assessment Authority.
Well, but if, yeah, like freezing the role and then putting some bylaws in place and then, is that what they, is that what you're saying? Basically, okay, let's go back to this.
Because it provided during that year, the assessment notice showed what it should have been, but they reverted back to the previous year because the numbers or the market numbers were somewhat volatile in the sense of, it was through the roof. Just like I said, market, it was just before the market bubble burst. But I don't know what sort of pushed BCS Assessment to do that, that's the only thing.
So how could we find out? Who could find out that?
Well, I think one of the, one of the things we can do, and this is under the heading of low-hanging fruit, I think we can, as a council, suggest and pass a motion here to get staff to give us a report, maybe not for the next meeting, but the meeting after, as to maybe a little context on this, this issue from the point of the municipality. And then also, I think what we can do immediately is send out a letter, I would call it a letter of disgust, probably not term it that way, but a letter of objection to the, you know, the extreme increases, that's something we can do. I don't think any staff report in the future will cause us to change our mind on our opposition to that, so I think that's something we could send out sort of tomorrow morning kind of thing. And then we can also, as appropriate follow-up after the staff report is produced, we can probably have a committee meeting of council where, you know, any of you that would like to show up can, can partake in a discussion because it is important enough. And then, of course, once we get our ducks in a row, no lake fund intended, then we can, I had to throw that in. Then we can, cheesy humor, it's the only humor I have, sorry. And then, and then, I've heard a couple boos there, but the, the other thing is, once we get our, our items in a row, then, then we'll maybe set up a meeting with the MLA so that we have our, you know, we have our story straight and that we're all singing the same song sheet. So I would like to suggest a motion here, I know Counselor Medlock is patient of any, but so, there's a few folks that want to head out, I know that, but so that, so that everyone knows we're taking this seriously, maybe a motion to direct staff to prepare a report for two meetings from now. I think the next meeting's probably not appropriate for.
Twenty fifth is very busy, your worship.
Yeah.
Would that, would that?
The meeting after.
Yeah, so, two meetings from now, so we'll have more discussion on this item, two meetings from now, and then also let council, under my signature, send a letter to the BCS Assessment Authority Chair indicating our opposition to this, these intense increases. So I'd like to suggest that motion.
So moved.
Okay? Moved and seconded. Questions or concerns? Those in favor?
Your worship, just a quick one, as we go through this, have to remind everybody that we'll have to be very careful in how we approach this because even the last suggestion of freezing the role at last year's rates, for example, you could make a lot of people unhappy, we're going to see decreases.
Yeah.
Just put that one out.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, a more in-depth discussion, once the staff report comes out, we'll probably reveal a little pen to where those boxes are over there from the BCS Assessment Board. Counselor Medlock, you've been very patient.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to say, I appreciate your approach. I mean, you didn't just come with the problem, you came with a bunch of solutions. And over the weekend, we get our package on Thursday or Friday, so over the weekend I sort of researched what was possible, what tools we have in our toolbox to do, to help out. And I think the only one that's really in the community charter right now is the averaging bylaw. So that typically, like our CIO has already said, has to be in place the year of the taxation. So the deadline on that for this current year was March 31st, and they actually want you to start at the previous year, but there are some provisions to get it going the same year, but either way, we're past that time. So I don't think there's anything else that we can do at a municipal level to help this year. And I also appreciate that you understand that it's, we're not the bad guys here this time. The province doesn't, but it's the province that sets those values. Did anybody have a conversation with Assessment as to why they have such large increases so quickly? Like, I mean, I guess their job. Like, I mean, I guess their job is to...
I've had several in person, I know people in this group, too, but their rationale is that they have, up until the last year, the houses have not been selling on Cockle Lake. They haven't, you know, they've basically maybe one or two sales in the last, for a really long time. So last year, there were three or four sales in the neighborhood, and then there were a couple of people who bought, bought other pieces of things that were different prices. So they felt like they had enough data now to reassess the entire lake. And in so doing, they did not actually physically come out and look at anything, they just kind of looked at a couple of things and said, okay, well, your property is this big. And they didn't really look at the specifics of each property, because as you know, every single one of them is unique, whether it's...
So the argument isn't necessarily about the new assessed value so much as the drastic increase, or short-term.
Yeah, I mean, we all recognize, and whether we think our assessment is fair or not, we recognize that, that some level of increase needed to happen. The questions are, you know, how, how accurate they've been in actually reassessing, which is, it's like, all over the map, right?
It's maybe more so inaccurate in the past as opposed to accurate now.
Some people are like, yeah, okay, well, that's a fair assessment, right? Others are like, oh, my gosh, that's way too much. And, you know, I mean, the guy who spent a million fifty is assessed at 973. So, you know, like, so, he's, oh, yeah, no, I'm good, right? So he doesn't care, and he's happy with that, right?
So I think U V C M is a good tool that council also has to argue a point that the system has flaws, provisionally, not just here in town. And I'm pretty sure that the Ministry of Community Sport, and I see what the big long title is now, had a report, because I remember coming up at U V C M, and it was more to do with industrial taxation and CAS paper and assessment system and how fair it was. And I remember they did that, so I think, I'm going to try and dig that out and see if it does speak to the assessment-based system. I know other provinces have a different system, they have caps. I learned that over the weekend with Google. Like at Ameritimes, I think they have cost of living index, caps, and then when a property is sold, that becomes the new value, because it's true to market value. But that's, you know, something that maybe B C Assessment should be looking at, and I think you're right, that somebody's got to make an argument, or they won't change. So U V C M is the vehicle that we have to bring forward resolutions, and it's a slow process. You know, we have to bring forward a resolution to our local association, who would endorse it or not, bring it forward to U V C M, who endorses it or not, who then lobbies on behalf of everybody to the province in the midst of years. It's not, and that can happen soon, but you got to start somewhere.
Well, yeah, and like you say, we're, as much as we have a current fee issue now, to look at the long, long-term, like a long-term solution, so that this isn't something that continues or will happen again.
But in the meantime, I agree, the averaging is a good way to go to take, take a look at how that works. I know the process is, they take the current year, and the previous two years, they average it, and form a bylaw, and you have to give notice to the community on how that affects the rest of the property owners, and I believe they have to give some sort of assent to that. But I'm hoping the report we get back in a month will speak to those points as to how that works. Because it would be, basically, what you're asking, the rest of the community do is subsidize, because the total amount of tax that needs to be collected for the district would remain the same. So where those tax dollars come from, decrease on your properties, and would have to come out of everybody else's, I'm sure, you know, spread across the rest of the properties, and whatever else, it would not be a huge hit, but it would be a hit, and those people have to agree to that as well. So I think that's how that process works, and hope that before we get back, speak to that, because I didn't get that into detail as to how it works. But anyways, like I say, I appreciate your tact here of coming with some solutions. I wish it was as easy as placing caps and things like that, it's just not, we don't have that ability.
Yeah, and I understand that. The idea is, like I say, I recognize, some, some things can be done here, some things have to be done at the provincial level, some things have to be handled at B C Assessment. And like I say, our purpose here was to kind of engage council and staff in the things that you can have the ability to control, and then ask that you do that to the...
What are you guys doing with the extra cash? Like, going to throw a party at the lake or something? Do something for us?
You know, the other thing, I think, if we can, say, for next year, hypothetically, we can, we can put the averaging program in place, I would certainly, personally, I'm just speaking as an individual, I think personally that should apply to every resident of the district.
Yeah.
Because I am not in favor of picking the folks with million-dollar homes around the lake, and then someone with, you know, a smaller hair-down house for $150,000, you know, has a higher tax burden, because, you know, we're trying to help the folks that need help around the lake. So in the interest of fairness, we have to explore it as a district.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, like I said, that's one of the things I wanted to state at the outset, is that we're not looking for special treatment, I say, we're just looking for something that's fair for the entire community. And I don't know if there's, if there's any possibility of going averaging back five years, I mean, you know, it's only three...
Three, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So in the interest of being fair to everyone and not ending up at the bottom of the lake, we have to be a little careful.
Oh, yeah, and I think that, you know, I mean, the thing is, is that everybody's, everybody's taxes are going up with our, everybody's property values are going up with ours, you can just look at the real estate prices, right? So I think that particular solution would benefit everybody, and not to go back and average over three years.
Yeah, should suit your thought. And only a couple folks, with Counselor Crop, and then the gentleman in the rear back after Counselor Crop.
Thank you. So I don't want to belabor everything else that's been said, because I'm totally in agreement with a lot of the comments that have already been stated. So I do want to say that in the, eight years ago was definitely a recommendation from the council, and under the mayor's signature of the day, there was a letter that was sent on behalf of some of our community, most of, all of our community. And I do recall that, and it was based on some very huge concerns about the ability to pay, and would people then be losing their homes, and the list went on and on, and I think we're kind of back into that kind of same scenario in some cases, with those extraordinary increases. Thank you for everyone coming in tonight, I know it's not always easy to stay out in the evening, and also the fact that there's some huge concerns about, you know, your abilities to pay and that. I wish, in hindsight, that we could have had this conversation in January, or as soon as your assessments came out. If that would have been possible, it would be great, because we could have a little more, you know, opportunity. But anyhow, in the event that...
Well, the time between January and March is like we're preparing for appeals, right? So I mean, we're really relaxed, yeah.
Of course, of course, yeah. So of course, I see that. But I, you know, I just hate not being able to get in there and help right now. The other thing is, is that if, I don't know if there's a gray area, most bodies there is, I don't know if the deadline is really passed where they can change anything or not, I don't know. But I do know that with the support of council, I know that that should carry some weight in terms of what's been done already as well. And if it's possible for us to dig out any of that old information, that would be certainly helpful, since it was successful. And I know that they don't come out unless there's specific concerns, typically in the past, you would have an assessment authority individual come out and go through, actually even with a district member, and they would go in and look at different portions of the community and see where we're at. So I don't think they really have come out for a long time, and that's why, of course, you're missing some of that vital information, there's that big gap, because there's nobody that actually walks, like you said, the properties and seeing, you know, like a $50,000 trailer versus a $200,000, you know, add-on. So there's nobody that really has that visual. So, yeah, so I'm in support of you guys being helped, and I certainly hope it's a pretty strong letter that's coming from our council, because it's certainly important to be supported in this endeavor.
We're not shocked, it may be strong.
No, that's good.
The other thing, I think that's important while, while you're here, Ms. Richardson, if you, or anyone that's here, we have in the little magazine, a little brochure rack up, up on top, there is a, there's some brochures pertaining to the tax deferment program, which applies to everyone as long as they don't have huge back tax problems. So I think that's worthwhile looking at, you know, not a solution to the problem, but it's, it's a part of it anyways. Gentleman in the back?
Thank you for your time, my counsel, and your worship. Just a quick question, if, if I go with the figure that was provided, that we contribute 5%, 6% of the overall total income in terms of tax to the City of Hope, I was just curious to see if there was any plan in the near future, or even a further future, to improve the services that the city gives back to the residents of Cockle Lake? And I'll just bring as an example that I don't have water in my cabin, I, I just went out and spent $3,000 so I can have water in my, my cabin. Meanwhile, I'm providing all this money back to the council, right? We don't have fire hydrants, we have rocks falling on our road. So there's a few things that could be enhanced, and I was just, just as a question, if there was any plan for the city to come and get a water line, or any kind of other services our way, past the camp, that is, because I, my understanding is that before the camp, services are mostly there, but once you have Cockle Lake camp, there's, there's nothing.
Fair enough. I don't, I don't believe the, not to disrespect the 5%, but I don't know if that's necessarily an accurate figure.
And I don't either.
We can certainly check on that, but, I mean, the residents of Cockle Lake are as important as anyone else in the community, so we kind of have to spread our improvements around as fairly as we can. But there's our illustrious asset management plan study, which, which you're welcome to, to stick around for, is coming up on the agenda a little, a little later, and literally, there's millions of dollars of work in the waiting, so we, you know, I don't want to make any promises tonight as to what's going to happen with Cockle Lake in the next, next couple of years. Just off-the-cup promises, you know?
No, fair enough. And thank you for your assistance, but what you're doing tonight is, is a good, is a good start.
Thank you very much. Hello there.
I was just going to say that when we were talking about the timeframe as to when this was addressed, and I know there was one lady here this evening, myself, called it different times to the B C Assessment, and we were told that there was no deadline, there was no rush, and that we were to wait until we saw what the mill rate would be before we go on.
Well, you know, I think anyone working for B C Assessment Authority, if you have their name...
Oh, I do, I do.
Well, they, they'd probably be looking for a new job tomorrow, I'll take in some substantial that comes in.
And it was just a real, sort of an insult, it was all bounced back, it was like two people that decide what was going to happen with, are our taxes going to be popping out because the dollars expire out?
No, no, the mill rate, yes, but I mean, your, your appeal issues...
We were told to wait to see what would happen.
Well, see, that is completely erroneous, there's no, yeah. So I mean, I would, I would maybe phone the supervisor of the person and say, for quality assurance purposes, our reputation's taken...
Always taken, yeah.
Yeah, because someone is presenting inaccurate information.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think, not to, not try to shut things down too early, but I guess a quarter to nine, that probably wouldn't apply anyways, but I'd like to thank the residents from Cockle Lake, who take it seriously, and do what we can. And maybe a couple-minute recess, and then those that don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting have a chance to exit tastefully. We have our asset management plan draft report, now obviously this is something that we'll probably have a special committee meeting to discuss, but to introduce it, maybe for Losky and Mr. Dick.
Well, your worship, I can talk about the video, this is its core information report, but absolutely, just to refresh your memories, in November, council approved the engagement of urban systems to assist us in moving forward with an asset management plan, which will lead to things like infrastructure priorities, reserve policies, and potentially infrastructure surtax policies, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a draft report, and we expect the final report before April 25th, which would then be covered by our assessment, both the Director of Operations and myself. And naturally, there would be work moving forward from committee and council as to moving forward on policies and priorities with regards to infrastructure. But tonight, I'd, I'd like to point you in a couple of directions. And first, I give you this draft report now, because it takes some time to go through and just get a sense of really the scope of the issue. And the final report will not change largely any principles, so I think it's pointing you in the right direction. But on page two, you can see in particular in the chart that the replacement value, as assessed in detail, for our infrastructure total, is $256 million.
Right? So we're quarter billionaires.
We're, we're billionaires, but that's largely liability, as opposed to asset.
You had to bring that in.
And if you look at the amount of money that's recommended to just the average annual life cycle investment to sustain the infrastructure, it's between 3.5 and 5.3 million, and then if you look at the next column, over the 20-year average annual investment, which is needed to pay for replacements, ranges from 1.8 to 5.9. And they do rate the infrastructure deficit, you know, anywhere from 6.8, I know it's a widespread, to 47.5 million, but basically as high as 20% of the infrastructure, 20, 25% needs to be replaced. Now, the numbers needn't necessarily scare you, they should certainly concern everybody involved. If you turn to page nine, there's a table, table 4.1, which is the risk level. And as we get into more detail after the final report and discuss infrastructure replacement, priorities, and policies, the mitigating factor related to how much you invest in infrastructure is the service life and the risk that you associate with that service life. So there are three risk levels that's provided within this report so far. There's risk level 1, which is standard service life, which is level two, which is the service life increased by 25%. And the service life, by the way, is averaged at about 20, 20 years for most of the infrastructure, some of the infrastructures. And risk level three, which is an increase in 50%. Those aren't wholly unreasonable if money's invested through the life cycle of the infrastructure to maintain it and identify what infrastructure is lasting beyond its predicted lifespan, and what infrastructure can just be repaired and satisfactory then continue to operate, as opposed to replace it. So you can see the totals that are ranging from 5.3 million per year to 3.5 million dollars per year. And again, it's a risk level, and I just want to make sure that council is concerned, but not overly so. And Kevin and I will work on the final report, covering this report. And also, on the 25th, you're going to get a delegation. The urban systems is coming in, and they're going to show the products that are provided as part of this. I mean, this is just the investment plan. This isn't the data behind it, which we're getting, which is an inventory of all the infrastructure, its length, its capacity, et cetera, its predicted replacement costs, et cetera. Also, its location, and it's G I S-based, so it's on a geographic information system, so that as we move forward, we can maintain that data, use the data, and it will only assist us and everybody involved. So we can get some of that data out to the public that isn't currently available for planning and subdivision purposes, for example. So pending any questions, I do present it only for your permission, and if you have any questions before the next council meeting on the 25th, obviously I invite those to attend to this, too.
Yeah, well, we shall do that. Perhaps a motion received, this one?
Sub move.
Counselor Crop, Counselor Smith. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Next, item 5B, that's pertaining to the station house update from our Director of Operations, and here's some neat opportunities to save some money here for the future as well. So, Mr. Dick, if you would like to speak to it.
Your worship, members of council, this report is before you, basically, to sort of give you an update on the project as to where we are right now, and look at different ways that we may want to move forward with further phases of the project. So just for a little bit of background for, for those in the room that may not be all that familiar with the project, Station House has been on the agenda since 2013, and more recently, it was decided that, that we would go out to R F P using Advantage Hope, be the one to put out the R F P in November of 2015, and in January of 2016, council approved the staff recommendation. the staff recommendation to engage marketing letter contracting on the current contract. Now, the focus of this contract was to embark on some structural repairs with the, with the station house, with the intent of having Advantage Hope occupy the station this year for the tourist center and museum, which is the eventual goal of the project. Now, between, between January 2016 and today, most of council has toured the station house. Counselor Erickson, as a matter of fact, invited council to, to join him on a tour of the station house, and much dialogue came out of that tour, as to the possibility of, instead of phasing out the project over a number of years, take advantage of any possible grants out there to look at expediting that process and doing the work in the short term rather than the long term, to basically, with the end goal of having a really, really nice building that will showcase the community, and get that done as soon as possible, so that we can best utilize that, that station house to promote hope and the general area. So out of those conversations, staff have looked into several ways forward. Now, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a grant that's available out there for us, being one option. We would currently, if we wanted to apply for that grant, we would have to finish up phase one of the project, which is nearing completion. The current status is that the, all these structural upgrades are done, more work would need to be done to occupy the building this year, and that would be, one of the alternatives in the report is to, to invest another $80,000 in the project for some unforeseen items that came up throughout the construction, that were additional to the original scope, that could not be predicted, they were items that were brought forward by the engineer and/or the district building inspector, as items that were needed to comply with occupancy. So there is the option that council could, could invest another $80,000 into the project to get to a minimum occupancy level for, for Advantage Hope to occupy the building this year, and the main floor has a tourist info center and museum. Alternatively, council could authorize funding up to $700,000 to proceed with the completion of all phases of the station house project on an accelerated timeline. Now, we have fortunately been able to look into a grant that will apply to this program, project, and that grant is through the B.C. of Rural Dividend Fund. We would be able to apply for $700,000 worth of funding for phase two of the project, and that would, we estimate the, to get to the end goal of the project that was devised originally, as a fully functioning, fully renovated, three-floor building, we would need to invest probably between $500 and $700,000 to get that done. So what, what I am recommending, what staff is recommending here tonight, is that council authorize $700,000 for the completion of the station house project, phase two, and that council directs staff to apply to the province, to the rural dividend fund grant for this work. And further to that, council directs staff to engage an architect consultant to provide additional design and projects go to inform that grant application. That is the recommendation from staff.
So this, this ties nicely in with our discussions at the last budget meeting, and Counselor Erickson wanted to be here to speak to it, but unfortunately, he's out of town for this meeting, so speaking to his points, and obviously, he has a very extensive background in construction, because he's in partnership with his brother in a construction operation. And he rightfully pointed out, there's certain economies at cost savings that can be realized if one obviously does the project in one shot. There's also an ability to keep the volunteer base motivated and interested, because a project that's done within the year is probably going to keep people more motivated than something that's a multi-year program. Now, Lori Thronis, our M.L.A., has continually asked about the, about the station house project, he's very keen on helping us make it happen sooner than later. As, as late as last week, he enquired about this, and he's willing to go to bat for us for the rural dividend fund program. It is a very high-profile location, so there's obviously a natural benefit attached to, you know, the province funding this location, because they obviously get their logo up there and recognition of the program, so given the, the amount of tourists that go through the facility when it's open, they'll get a lot of advertising mileage out of their funding of this program. What I would like to suggest to council is that, tying into Mr. Dickens' ideas there, is that we move forward with architectural plans on this for the final product, and that we, also, there's a, a trigger point where if we find the, find that we are the lucky recipients, or we're the recipients of the rural dividend fund, that we immediately charge forward with the program. If we are not, then we still have two options, we have the option of moving forward in a phased approach still, and we have the option, of course, of funding it ourselves and borrowing off our reserves, which are very good finance indicated, is very possible, given the healthy finances of the district. So I would like to put that little, little decision point in, once we find out what's happened with the rural dividend fund, because that still gives us a couple of choices to pursue at that point. Counselor Cropp and Counselor Miller?
Thank you, through you. So thank you for the report, this really reflects our, our in-depth discussion that we had the other evening at our budget meeting with the, quite a few public actually, and what I was wondering was, I do not recall, or I don't even know if we ever had that discussion, is this like a 60/40, or is it a one-third, one-third, what was that, I can't read the call.
Through the chair, it's a 60/40 program, so the District of Hope would be on with the 40%, however, of the 40%, 10% in fine is available through the program.
Thank you, and then the next question I had was, what is the deadline for the application on that grant?
May 31st is the deadline for the first intake.
For the first wave?
October 31st is the deadline for the second.
Okay, and would we have that capability in-house of putting that together?
My intention is to, should council give direction tonight, I would immediately engage a building consultant to provide us with the background or report that would inform, and also accompany our grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Miller and Counselor Smith, and Counselor Doug?
Okay. Where do I want to start talking? So I think council has always had the desire to complete the project to, to an end, and the idea of, I think we were all comfortable with that, even previous council was comfortable with that idea, and I think we're realizing that single phasing this project provides an opportunity for some cost savings versus over time, because we've looked, now I guess we've got firsthand experience looking at the building and seeing what type of work has to be done, and then undone, and then redone, which doesn't make sense, I don't think anybody would build a house and continually be doing things like that on their own. So that's why I'm, I'm side with this as an idea. I like the recommendation in that, in my mind, it overbudgets for the work that we need to be done there, simply so that we have the opportunity to maximize on our grant application, in the case that we have a lower number selected here, and it comes in, you know, even if it was $40,000 over, we wouldn't get our 60/40 grant on that. So I appreciate that that's why the number is what it is. We had those discussions at our budget meeting. I, I like the recommendation, but I would like to propose that we add another and further that to it, so I'd like it to read. And further that, council continue to include the current station house steering committee and the Director of Operations to influence the design and use of the facility. I think it's important that the volunteers that have spent so much time over the last, like, three, four years really, making this project come to be what it is, continue to be involved in it. Ultimately, I think they see the end, that they have the vision in their minds as to what this should look like, they're invested in it now, and I'd like to see them continue to participate in it, and I think that would help along the line as well, continuing to engage volunteers in the project. I don't think this needs to be turned over into a District of Hope operations project, I think it needs to be, continue to be a community project, because that's what it is, and that's why it's been successful, I think that's where we're, we're seeing this motivation. Excuse me. So I think that's all I have to say, I'd like to propose that motion then.
Can we get you to repeat that please?
Sure, I should have been like a UBCM to make you hand it in first. So just an additional further that, or end further that, council continue to include the current station house steering committee and the Director of Operations to influence the design and use of the facility.
Your worship, clarify, ultimately, the district will approve any design, because we are the owner of the facility.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And would the mover be amenable to the point of, if the rural dividend fund, if we do not receive that, then we have a, we have another decision-making point at that point to decide, are we going to fund it in its entirety, or are we going to continue with the phase of replacement?
Yeah, I don't, I definitely agree with that. I don't think we need to include that in the motion, because that is always the case, should we be unsuccessful in the grant application, council always, we're not committing with this motion to spending that money, we're committing at this point to applying for the grant, and then we'll take a look at it at that.
Well, I would, personally, I would appreciate it included in the motion, because, like, your friendly addition at the end, that's a given, that we would dialogue with, with the existing folks, and the user groups, the volunteer, so on and so forth, that's, I mean, we would do that anyways, but I think for clarity's sake, it's important that we have it all in writing, so that anyone that references this decision recognizes, okay, they're not moving ahead to the, to the full completion, until they figure out if they're getting the rural dividend fund or not, and at that point, we'll have another quick sit-down and decide where we're going, because I think the message has to be sent clearly, that, you know, we're proceeding ambitiously, but we're also, there's a sort of air of caution there as well.
I think on the flip side of that, you don't want the motion to read that if this doesn't go through, we're not going to do the project, because then the province will look at that through the grant application, when they look at the resolution of council, and they'll think, well, this is just a, only if we give them the money, it's a project. I think it's stronger resolution to not include that, I think the intent is there, and council always has that ability to cancel a project at any time, we're not committing to spending the funds, so I would not like to see that in the, in the motion I made.
Okay, do we have a second here for the motion?
Second.
Okay. I think, I guess, the message I get is it's the agreement of everyone around the table, that we will have decision-making point after the, the grant decision. Okay, that's good.
Sorry, I, I, thank you, through you, so I guess.
Actually, Counselor Smith?
Oh, sorry about that.
Counselor Doug here.
Sorry.
Got a good line here, so. Just a couple of things with Advantage Hope, obviously, if we're going to go for this process, it's not going to be moving ready for them this year, is Advantage Hope willing to wait one more year? Okay? And on the other note, is the current visitor's info center usable for another year without large cost to the district?
Ask me.
Are we able to make, are we able to patch it and make it work for one more year too? Just so, I don't want to see good money go over bad money, right? If we're going to focus in on this project, which I think that's what we're pretty much looking at, and we get the, say we do, or are successful for this grant, and it's going to take some time then, so if we get this beautiful building at the end of it, Advantage Hope is going to take the backseat and go into the old building, stay in the old building for one more year, I don't want to see us have to throw a bunch of money into that building, right? You see what I'm saying?
Your worship, are there any big surprises, like your roof collapsed?
So they, Frank?
We don't, we don't, because we do want to.
It's an AFR.
And just one more, just for clarification too, I do, I'm in big favor of the architect and the hard numbers of this, I know, as we started this project, just as me being new on council, we've started at one number, and it's gradually gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, and I think the community's going to see that go, holy moly, where's the end, is the end in sight, so I think bringing in the architect and getting the hard numbers, and finally, now that we've had the envelope opened on that building, is going to be a huge gain for us as a council and staff, so we're not getting hammered out by the public as well, to make sure that we have hard numbers, figures that we can go off of too, so I'm in big favor of that.
Okay, Counselor Doug?
Okay, just a couple of things for clarification, thank you for you. So are we still suggesting that we're going to put $80,000 towards the final stuff that needs to be done as a result of phase one? Are we still suggesting that we're doing that? And then are we still suggesting that the tourist info center still move in for May? Or are we stopping that process? So that's one question. Sorry, I got my, made my notes. So then obviously, if we're stopping the process, we're delaying the move in until we receive, hopefully, the grant, no, until we receive the grant funding, it's not going to be hopefully, it's, we are going to receive the grant funding, when is the implementation of that? So we would know May, we'd implement the grant by May 31st, when would we know if we were successful, and how soon could we start the next final phase? We're completing on that, and I have one more question. Let me just fire that away at you, where Kevin? Okay?
Okay, through the chair. So, no, if, if we were successful with the grant application, we would not be looking at spending the $80,000. The, yes, the move in for Advantage Hope would be delayed. Now, the, the grant application deadline is May 31st, the feedback I got from the program is that they will not be making a decision on awarding the grants until early summer, so I'm thinking by the end of June. So at that point in time, we would then need to go out to tender on that work that's required, so we probably wouldn't be looking at getting started with the project boots on the ground until September.
Okay, good, so one final question then, so the $700,000 has to be in our financial plan in our budget for the application to go forward, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to spend the money per se, right?
That's absolutely correct.
Just want to have that on the record, for the, for the public to be aware that it's not necessarily something that we have to, that we would be moving forward on with that. Thank you.
Correct. Sounds good, so we have Counselor Cropp next.
Thank you. So just a little bit more of clarification, I guess, is that when we talked about your next step, we would be thinking that you would be hiring an engineer consultant to talk about what's really going to happen, how much money, the hard cost will be, and at that point, if there was any unforeseen crazy thing, then we would really have to be coming back to the table and sitting down and discussing that, if it was over and above our plan of $700,000.
To the chair. Certainly, if, through the process of taking a building, consulting through the building, and discussing the scope of work that we desire, and should they come back with a, a number that's just completely foreign to what we were thinking, then I, I would suggest that we would come back to council, either at a meeting or definitely at committee level and discuss how we would go about moving forward at that point.
Okay, thank you, that's what I want to hear.
Well, and I'm sure when we, when we get the report back from the architect, and prior to that, when we guide the architect with, with the funding committee, there'll be options for sort of a Taj Mahal version of the project and a, and middle-of-the-road and bargain basement kind of version, so we, we have choices as to how far we want to go and kind of features that we can include there, so. And you know, I think the, the other important thing that we have to include here is, is a special thank you to Advantage Hope, Stephanie Hooker, the volunteers, Berkeley Fletcher, for getting it to this stage. This is not a case of any dis- This is not a case of any dissatisfaction at all, this is a case of, there may be some really neat cost savings attached to moving ahead now, and there are real good cost savings. We've always decided, as councillor Medlock, we've always said that, as councillor Medlock said, that we're, we want the project completed, but if it's over a number of years, obviously there's certain extra financial expenses attached to that, so might be an amazing opportunity for us. Councillor Medlock and councillor Stewart.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that it was just made aware publicly, because the budget meeting, we talked about it, but not here yet. The reason why we would not spend that eighty thousand dollars of move in is because you need a very clear separation from the current project to the new project, so that the grant application is a standalone project, and there's no carryover. So that, that's why I see that. The reason I wanted to include that further that in the motion that we're speaking to now, was that it's important to have the stakeholders involved in the design, so that when those particulars get costed out, it's to the design of the people that are going to be intended to use the facility. So that, I don't know, I think would keep costs down, I mean, you know, I don't think it'll be a pie in the sky type situation, where they're just going to put everything desirable in there. There are people that have the district of hope in their best interest, and they understand where this project should go. I think that's why I'd like to have them involved, so that's just been more specifics on it.
Okay, councillor Stewart.
So, I thank you for that conversation about that it will come back to the table if the grant application does not occur. And so, for the purposes of applying for the grant, I can support this motion, and I'm thankful for the conversation and that it is recorded, and that we can visit this if the grant application isn't successful. So, for the purposes of the grant application, I could support this.
Okay, sounds good. Motion is on the floor. I think we've had some very good discussion. I won't say exhausted, but good discussion. So all those in favor? Contrary? Motion passes, thank you very much. Now, in the interest of the late hour, I'm going to keep the mayor's report reasonably brief, by my standards anyways. A couple of, a couple of things. Thank you to the Search and Rescue from tonight. We had a, we had a very good get-together, a coffee with council session. The majority of people that were there actually were from Search and Rescue, and that was nice to catch up with them and get a tour of the facility. And I have to say, I can't say enough good things about folks in Search and Rescue, because they're all unpaid, and they, I think most of them that have been with Search and Rescue haven't had a good night's sleep in years, so that's certainly something to be admired. And I think an additional item that is worth a mention is the meeting that I had in conjunction with Mr. Porloski, with the Minister of Foreign Investment pertaining to the Barrett Gold project. I don't necessarily think this is particularly newsworthy at this point, which is actually a good coincidence, because Miss Kinsley's paper just left, but, but the reason I bring it up is just good to keep people abreast of, you know, the little baby steps we're taking. Now, what is, as everyone knows, the Barrett Gold project, the ski hill resort development has not moved forward yet. Barrett Gold is pursuing, continuing to pursue the planning process. As council had discussions some time ago, we thought it was worthy to meet with the Minister of Foreign Investment, to chat with the minister, update the Minister, Ms. Teresa Watt, about what Barrett Gold was thinking of. She, of course, is very well-connected in the Asian community, and a project of that scope is certainly not outside of her line of fire, as it were. When we met, we were there with, as I said, John Lissell, Dennis Adamson, the regional district director, and of course, you know, acknowledging that the project is actually in his jurisdiction. M.L.A. Thronis was there, Dan Warrenstein from Barrett Gold, Tammy Shields from Advantage Hope, and McKay Edwards unfortunately had an unfortunate skiing accident, so he messed up a shoulder a bit, but he was able to teleconference in. And so I guess the play-by-play on that is that the ministry is aware of Barrett Gold's ideas, and they're going to work closely with the Ministry of Foreign Investment to flesh out their plans. There's McKay Edwards, the consultant that works on behalf of Barrett Gold, has a track record of putting together successful resorts in the United States, so this is not his first kick at the can. The minister was particularly excited about the fact that this would be a brownfield redevelopment, and I guess that's the sort of the lingo for a existing mine site that's been decommissioned, that potentially will be a resort in the future. Now, I know there were certain folks going around town a while ago saying this is a definite goal that's going to happen. I would not go, I would not make that statement, but I think there's definitely a good hope for the, for the development. And there's lots of permits, lots of consultations that have to take place, agreements that have to be put in place with regional district, First Nations, so on and so forth, so lots of ground to get covered, but I think it was a worthwhile meeting, and Mr. Porloski, I guess you, and thank you for driving by Lee Carpool, it was good. So, it's good not having to drive, so that was nice. And, yeah, very productive day and a half. We had a, we had a pre-meeting to get our ducks in a row, and then when we met with the minister, we were all on the same page, and it was an efficient meeting, because we only had about forty minutes of ministers. That's that, that's the mayor's report for today. Lots more to say, but I think we're going to run out of time, make sure of this. Maybe start with councillor Croft under councillor's force?
Okay, it'll be quick and dirty. Thank you to Search and Rescue for hosting this pre-council meeting kind of monthly coffee clout that we started tonight. They were the first ones to step up to the plate to invite council, and certainly is appreciated that they hosted that. And basically, just for those that don't know, it's just a general discussion time about absolutely anything that any councilors or public wish to attend can pretty much go to. And we did have it at Search and Rescue, and I hope somebody else steps up to the plate so we can kind of do it all over the community, and that would be super. And it's about an hour long before council meeting, and it was very informative, and it gives people an opportunity to voice really what's in their heart for that special moment with council. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Croft, councillor Medlock.
Outside of attending budget meetings recently, I attended my last Community Futures meeting as a director. Been forced off the board after nine years, part of the Treasury Board of Canada, my decision. So I didn't want to step away from it, but they leave me, I have to take a year's leave before I can be a director again. But I am still a committee member on the Economic Development Committee. So there is a spot open, if you will, for Hope, for anybody that's interested in being a director with Community Futures. It's a great organization that does a lot of good work in the community and the region. And Victor Smith is the current chairperson, so everybody knows him, and I'm sure if you just holler his name, he'll find you. So if you're interested, he's the guy to talk to.
Sounds good, it's all I have. So that would make you a very young retiree?
Yeah.
Well, thank you on behalf of the community for all the good work you've done in the Community Futures function, because I know you're very passionate about that, so one of your many endeavors. Councillor Stewart.
So, basically, I just had a mental health break. I went to childhood anxiety workshop at school. It was very informative, different techniques on how to maintain, you know, a level of stability, and it was, it was pretty good. I also went to the Mental Health Substance Abuse Workshop, run by Operai of Transition Society. And there was a great guest speaker who told the story of her journey from high school into addiction, and then back out again. And it was a great inspirational little story. I'm looking forward to another session tomorrow night at the golf course. Also, the ratepayers donated their afternoon yesterday to cleaning up the garden at the Park Place Manor. So I went along with my husband and Ryan Moll, Shirley Corpio, and John Duck, and Haley Moll, and little Hannah. And we got our hands dirty, we found a fence we didn't know was there, and cleared away the brush, and hopefully, when you drive by, you'll see that there's a bit of a difference there. It was a feel-good day. So, and then budget meeting, and the chamber dinner on March thirtieth. I attended, great turn of day.
Thank you very much, councillor Stewart. Councillor Dible?
Well, yeah, outside of budget meetings, I also attended the Fraser Health recruitment meeting, so that is moving along with, through Fraser Health, they're doing a lot of linkages to Hope and for the lifestyle and advantage of working in the health authority in Hope, whether it's through healthcare, home health, doctors, nurses, whatever that is that Fraser Health offers. So they're also working closely with Advantage Hope, using some of the links that Advantage Hope has to promote, to promote Hope. So, we, I will continue to work with that committee, however I can support that. We met with M.P. Mark Stoll around some infrastructure opportunities, so see if that, what will happen with that. And then yes, coffee with council tonight at Search and Rescue. That's been my two weeks.
Thank you very much.
There's a budget meeting, last budget meeting was good. Coffee with council today was so, sorry again, thank you then. They voiced a couple of concerns too, that they had, showed us that they had some equipment outside, I think a lot of people knows that, their need for a newer building and newer location eventually down the road, so it was good hearing their side of things. I think this coffee for council thing, the town could really take advantage of it, for different things that are problems around town. It's hard for us to get around just personal, one by one, so I think them offering that facility for us to go do, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, I think it's going to be very productive. Brigade is meeting April nineteenth, Direct Center, seven p.m. We'll be, I don't think I can announce yet, but we, after that, will announce our entertainment for the next, this upcoming year. And other than that, that's the mayor's report.
Sounds pretty good. Okay, I think that's it from the mayor's council reports. Now we have in front of us items eight A and eight B, and that's the official committee amendment by law thirteen seventy-one twenty sixteen pertaining to twenty-one seven nine two union bar. And that is on page eighty-three. I'm going to make sure I get to here. And the questions, do we have in motion? Councillor Medlock? Councillor Stewart? Okay. I have a quick question through to Mr. Gill. Now, there appears to be some longstanding issues between two neighbors pertaining to the right-of-way. Do you think there's, in this process, will be an opportunity to kind of fine-tune responsibilities and who's doing what, and...
Your worship, through you, well, I'm hoping both parties can be civil with one another when it comes down to it. There's a right-of-way that's registered to the property, and then an easement registered to that right-of-way. And so that's, there's obligations for both property owners to sort of deal with maintenance and works to be done on that right-of-way. However, from, let's say, the approving officer's standpoint, I have to still ensure that there's going to be access to those future lots. Now, that could be a negotiating point for both parties to sort of figure out things and play fair in the sandbox. And that's all I can say at this point.
Yeah, yeah, important. Okay, motion's on the table?
Can I just ask a question, just to clarify? So the easement is basically on title that indicates that they have access to their property through this driveway or this right-of-way?
Your worship, through you? I believe the right-of-way itself is a separate plan, and then, and the easement is an agreement in this form that's to that right-of-way. And so that easement, yes, the easement agreement does talk about sort of the movements of one party over the other's land, but also talks about the maintenance and the things as well.
But by approving this two-parcel subdivision, isn't going to disallow someone access to their property?
It should not. It, I mean, your worship, through you, the easement's going to always be there, unless both parties decided to terminate and then renegotiate a new easement. However, with the new, let's say, lot that would be created on this, that's where the property owner or the applicant will need to figure out as to what the legal remedy's going to be. And that's something that's going to be their private affair as to figuring out.
So their private affair is figured out before this process is completed then, right? Because we can't have a landlocked property.
Your worship, through you, and as part of the land titles act, the approving officer has to ensure that that property doesn't become landlocked?
Yeah.
That access is...
So you're the official mediator. Congratulations. That's under the heading of, yeah.
You're going to give it a whistle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we know you're a good team player and a good team builder, so hopefully, the two parties can come together for a win-win solution. Okay? Okay, motions on table? All those in favor? Contrary? Okay, and then item eight B, same issue, but the zoning amendment by law thirteen seventy-two twenty sixteen, pertaining to twenty-one seven nine two union bar. Okay? Councillor Smith?
Second.
Councillor Medlock? All those in favor? Contrary? Thank you so much. Correspondence? Oh, correspondence, pass. Two little items here. Okay. Councillor Medlock? Councillor Dible? All those in favor? Thank you so much. Other pertinent business question period? For items relevant to the agenda? Hello?
Are the seven hundred thousand dollars put into the budget for the station house zag food phase one, or is that just for phase two?
That's phase two, correct.
So seven hundred thousand just for phase two, plus whatever was spent on phase one, which was a hundred and eighty thousand or whatever it was?
The important part to remember on that is, we have to anticipate higher costs. Hopefully, it'll come in well under that, but for grant application purposes, you can't up the ante once you submit a...
So the district's portion was three hundred thousand, wasn't it? Or two hundred thousand?
Forty percent, two eighty.
Two eighty?
Yeah.
And then the province is the rest?
Yeah. And the other, the other neat part is, once this facility is completed, as you're well aware, the property where the tourist info center is currently on is freed up for reuse or resale, so there's a neat opportunity there for the taxpayers as well, because that's a prime location. And I think councillor Erickson's point is a very good one, that you're doing it piecemeal, you know, we're going to save money in the long.
Well, I'm for that as well, get it all done in one shot, right? Save money for the taxpayer.
Yeah. Nothing wrong with saving money, that's what we all do here, so. Okay? Further questions? I guess everyone is ready to hit the wagon trail. Okay, and next regular meeting, April twenty-fifth. So, motion to adjourn unless someone wants to stay. Okay, thank you.